Of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, roll call started on my right.
Counselperson Joshua.
Counselperson Brent Fire.
Mayor Jimmy John King.
Counselperson Craig Anderson.
Counselperson Jeremiah Olgin.
Looking for approval of tonight's agenda.
Uh, shouldn't be anything additional from the staff end.
Standing up here. And uh, add or delete. Alright, looking for motion to approve.
I'll make motion approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Uh, approval of regular meeting minutes of August thirteenth, two thousand nineteen.
I'm motion first.
We have motion to approve, we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Special meeting minutes of August twentieth, two thousand nineteen.
I'll make motion approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That also carries. That takes us to finance and budget, accounts payable and additional listings there. If we have any questions from the table, direct them to Administrator Jeff Schimmel. And see if you can answer them.
Too big a list this time.
I'll make motion approve.
We have a motion to approve, we have a second?
Second.
No questions or discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. That takes us to motions in general business. Let's see, first thing on our motions in general business tonight is... Southern Hills expansion. Okay. We have the EAW summary for the Southern Hills expansion. And uh, SEH has completed the environmental assessment worksheet for the expansion of Southern Hills North Ridge as required by state statute. Derek Dusel, does that get that?
That works for me.
Pretty close, huh?
Close enough.
Senior biologist from SEH will be on tennis to present the EAW to the city council. There will be a thirty day public review process starting September second through October first. The EAW will be placed on our website with copies available for review at City Hall and the library. Derek, did you wanna say?
I made a correction on that.
Oh, okay.
Since this was written, there has been a change with the review count, count of process. So, it'll start September ninth and go through October ninth.
Okay, we'll make that correction. The start, the review process will start September ninth and go through October ninth, correct? And the EAW will still be placed on our website with copies available for review at City Hall and at the library. With that Derek, we'll let you summarize the summary, you can ask your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, yes, I'd like to just briefly give an overview. I know the process is not something that the city goes through regularly. So, we just wanna make sure for clarity on what the EAW process is, what it involves, what your obligations are. Uh, I believe in your packet you have the draft of the EAW. I'm calling it the draft because you in essence tonight through resolution will be giving that as the final document. Uh, I've also provided what should be in your packet distributed yesterday is a technical memorandum that just provides a summary. So, rather than going through the three hundred plus pages, we just wanna highlight some of that. For the administrative record, I'm just gonna go over a few of the key parts just so that we have that identified. Certainly at this point, Sun Communities is proposing to construct three hundred simple family residential sites. It's part of a home development in Stewartville here in town. Uh, the property is ninety-two and a half acres in size. The developed area is sixty-two point two acres of that, which includes the home sites, stormwater ponds, playground, open space, and storm shelter. Uh, the EAW process goes through a number of topics and asks us to identify to the best of our ability using available information to identify what sort of environmental impacts may result from the proposed project. Uh, in summary, we've identified the land use and cover types that are present. It is located in agricultural area with some wetlands and open space. Majority of that will be developed. A phase one of our environmental site assessment has been completed and it has identified that there's no past environmental hazards that anybody's aware of. There are a number of permits that are required for the project. And I do wanna elaborate a bit that the EAW is not a permit. It is not a permission. It is part of what we like to say in general terms is environmental vetting. What do we need to know about this site to assist with future decision making? Uh, the process will go through the city as the responsible governmental unit. The review process is open to the public and it is distributed to approximately thirty agencies that are also given the opportunity to weigh in. It's information gathering. It is not a permit by itself. The process for permitting does continue once the EAW process is complete. And there are a number of permits and permissions that the project still requires that will have to be gone through in the future. Geology and soils, we have identified no significant issues. It's primary oil crop land, we don't have shallow bedrock or karst cartography. Uh, water and sewer, there's capacity within the city systems now to support the additional homes, both from management of wastewater and from provision of potable and, and fire suppression. The applicant has proposed stormwater management and erosion control that will occur through two wet ponds that will have to be sized appropriately for rate, volume, and treatment requirements. Those will be reviewed as part of future work. From the concept plan, it appears to be adequate for what's required for the amount of impervious. Um, certainly this site will be mass graded during construction and will have to receive permits for that as well, plus managing the site just for road and dust control. For a water resources perspective, we have confirmed five wetlands on the property. Uh, they're a little under six acres in total area. Some of those are proposed for impacts. Uh, that is a separate permit process. Currently, the EAW discusses those as draft wetland boundaries. We have a tep meeting with Homestead County on Thursday that will finalize those. Uh, we're proceeding in the draft. Uh, if there's a significant change in that, we may ask for an administrative revision prior to publication, but we don't anticipate that. The project certainly with, with homes will generate solid waste. That's just typical waste that any household would have. Uh, would be disposed of through a commercial waste hauler and, and treated in an approved landfill. Uh, this is not a hazardous waste generator, there's no permitting for hazardous waste, but there's certainly related topics. For a fish and wildlife resources standpoint, it's currently agriculture, but it doesn't mean that it doesn't support wildlife, but the type of wildlife that would be in that setting is not typically something that's of concern with the land conversion. Uh, Department of Natural Resources has reviewed the project and submitted a preliminary letter with some guidance for logger hitchhike, which is a listed bird species. Uh, the applicant has indicated some measures that they're willing to take to try to not disrupt the shrike. Uh, and that's discussed in the EAW. Cultural resources, the study was also done by the applicant. Uh, the conclusion of that study was there are no historic properties or resources impacted. From a visual odor, noise, and dust, which is kind of an aggregate subject, uh, there's no additional specific high visibility lighting or structure hangs that would conflict with any adjacent land uses. And it's not anticipated to, outside of during construction itself, any significant amounts of odor, noise, or dust. A traffic study was also completed by the applicant. Uh, the conclusion of that study was that some traffic rates would go up in the immediate area. The important part related to the city is it does not recommend any changes to infrastructure or any revisions to traffic management currently. And then in summary cumulative impacts, we acknowledge that residential development can trigger additional development, uh, but there is no specifically identified projects that are connected to this action. So, it's a bit of a summary, but there isn't anything that we're evaluating outside of the current project. So, what we have currently is the ask is there is a draft resolution that the mayor can, can read and act on. Uh, what we're asking for this evening is for consideration of the EAW to be complete and ready for publication. We would do that in the EQB monitor. Uh, SEH would submit that and notice it to all the agencies and distribute all of the copies. Uh, the process then does allow for thirty days. During that period, we've identified City Administrator Schimmel as the recipient of all the comments. Uh, as those are received, he would share with SEH and we would prepare a response to conclude the process. Uh, on the assumption that the resolution will be passed tonight or scheduled going forward, uh, would be to notice the paper, prepare hard copies, notify the EQB monitor, which would be published on Monday, September ninth. That essentially is the kickoff of that thirty day period. Uh, throughout that period, comments are received. At the conclusion, we would prepare a response to comments that would address any of the comments received. That would also be shared with council. At that time, we would be asking the council to make a decision on whether additional environmental review is required or what we call a negative declaration where you're deeming that the environmental review process is complete. At this point, we're scheduling that to occur on the October twenty-second city council meeting. If a, a large number of comments are received and we can't respond in a timely manner, that date could be moved back to accommodate the time needed to respond. Uh, at this point, if any has a determined to be required, the project would proceed with additional review. If the EAW is deemed by you to be sufficient, that process is terminated. And at that point, any decisions or permitting or other actions can certainly be taken at that point. Uh, certainly if there's any questions on the process or the content and available to assist with that, it really is all I'm prepared to present today and not going in detail on the rest of it. We really like to rely on those outside reviewers to provide comment to you to weigh in on. Uh, but we can certainly take comments or any questions you may have at this time.
Questions for Derek?
Do you know anything about the traffic study? We've had a lot of comments about the traffic going on Twentieth Street. And according to this, it won't be, it won't be affected, but there already complaining, there are already complaints about the traffic out there?
So, we didn't prepare the traffic study. The study, certainly how readily we've incorporated the findings. Uh, the study itself does say that there isn't a necessary change in any of the infrastructure or the timing, but it does acknowledge that there's an increase. That doesn't mean necessarily that that's right, that there should be additional considerations or that you may not want to investigate that further. But on the basis of the study, that's essentially what's being reported in the EAW.
When was that study done?
Uh, it was recently updated to, uh, I wanna say it was completed in mid-August, um, is the update to, for the three hundred units. Uh, it was previously done for two ninety-three and then they've updated it to, to include those additions then. So, it is a current document.
So, who completed the traffic study?
I believe that was WSB, who did the traffic study?
I think any questions I have are further down the road. We have a lot of...
The, the kind of, uh, I realize that there's some sort of drafts or, where it's mapped out potentially how it would be placed in there, you know, in any units. But clearly that's just for the sake of trying to do the study of the environment. That's all we're looking at right now, correct?
Uh, officially, we are calling it a concept plan. It has not gone through preliminary or final plan approval, but it's certainly subject to change. The intention of the EAW is to identify what we are calling a project, which is that concept plan as laid out. That certainly is subject to change. Um, typically unless it's a dramatic change, the, the EAW process would be complete. So, if it were to go up or down, let's say a ten percent change in units or really reconfiguration, as long as it doesn't affect the results of the EAW, we wouldn't have to go through the process again. So, it's not the typical for projects, particularly early on, we're going through this process, to not be one hundred percent. Uh, you'll note it's a concept plan, it's not a grading plan. But there are components that are missing of a final approval process. Um, that said, we believe it is sufficient for the environmental review to get a sense of what sort of considerations do we need to make.
Yes, I don't have any questions on this, at this time.
Thank you, Derek.
Thank you.
It's up to you.
I don't have any to present here, I'm just here to, uh, follow proceedings.
Alright, so I actually requested tonight would be to approve resolution two thousand nineteen dash, a resolution for the Stewartville City Council making a positive declaration on the completeness and publication of an environmental assessment worksheet for the proposed Southern Hills development. Do we have motion?
This just would say that they're done with the environmental?
They feel, you feel as SEH, as our representative feels, it's a complete study for the environmental impact of the concept plan, is that how I understand it?
That is our recommendation is that it is a complete document and I can receive with the review portion of that. That certainly implies as you are the responsible unit, you're endorsing that and certainly by implication, city staff are also agreeing that it's complete.
This will allow it to go with the thirty day comment period, which will be looked at again, the comments, and review what needs to be reviewed there.
Correct.
What about the wetlands, I get, you said you have a meeting on Thursday with the council?
Yes, so there, there is a review this Thursday to look at the wetland boundaries. That's not related to permitting or permission to view the impacts, that's just to establish that jurisdictional limit. What we've presented in there is what we've done with the wetland delineation until that's been approved through the agencies. That is technically subject to change. Uh, we don't anticipate a change out there, or if we do, it might shrink them a little bit. Uh, this is one of those things that if we wait until everything is perfect, we never quite get to publication. So, if we can get it to sufficient detail for the agencies to weigh in. So, certainly Homestead County will be getting a copy of this and certainly is that meeting on Thursday. If they'd like to comment on it or refine that, we would certainly accept those comments. But I don't think that that's one of those details that we would necessarily wait publication for.
The easier way to look at this Josh is this is something that we as a council asked that they do, and they did do it. The study's complete, now they're asking if they want to go through the commenting process. So, we've already asked for the study, that's why we have the files. So, do we have a motion?
I'll make motion.
Do we have a second?
We'll second it.
All in favor, or any other discussion, questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the motion to general business. Two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty paid library intern. As library transitions, there are a number of projects dealing with libraries print collection and a website that I'm hoping to accomplish over the next year. It would be helpful if I had a dedicated part-time staff person to help me with the project. I'm asking the council to approve a part-time position maxing out at ten hours per week paid at the library pay scale and terminating on, or I don't know, the city first, twenty twenty, to help with these projects. Over the course of the library page interview, two candidates rose to the top and we offered a position to one of those candidates, Olivia Bruce?
Hezer? Hezer, is it?
Hezer. After council approved her on August thirteenth, two thousand nineteen. The other candidate, Emma Huber, I feel would make an ideal fit for this position and I hope to offer her the position pending council approval. It is important to note that we released, recently posted a full-time vacant simple library associate position paid grade eight at a part-time library, part, paid grade four level. The cost savings from that decision will more than pay for this paid grade two position in the rest of two thousand nineteen and eight months of two thousand twenty. At the August twentieth, two thousand nineteen library board meeting, I present this position to board and may recommend the council approve this position. Um, questions or discussion? One question, I guess I have, don't we usually get these interns through the school for, uh, some of them have to do some community work for their honor society work or things like that?
We have traditionally gotten some national, and we did throughout the summer, had some National Honor Society. Uh, the skill set of, of those kids is, can be somewhat limited in that they're just not necessarily trained for some of the specific tasks that I'm looking done, to have done here. Um, this is a candidate who has library experience already and is looking to forge a career in librarianship. So, it seemed like a better fit for a paid internship position like this.
Any questions?
Nate had talked to me about it, just to see if this would be something we could try out on a temporary basis. And because of our personnel changes, it seemed like because of budget, there would be no, um, additional budget impact because of the savings we'd have. It just seemed like a good opportunity to try it out and it would be under review and then we'll be able to present back work foundation if it's something we wanted to see go forward in the future.
Let's make it, let's make it terminate on the city first, twenty twenty.
Okay. Actually, personally, I think it's a good idea in the fact that we just bring in a new, uh, director of the library who's hopefully got big visions, the way at least you've got me thinking about it. You've got big visions and I feel like, uh, there's no reason for us to step on your tail and hold you back right now and, I mean, over what I consider to be a fairly small ask, so in fact, I'll make the motion to approve it.
I'll suck at that.
We have motion second, Eric, questions or discussion?
Do I have to specify? I, I agree with what he said, the ten, ten hours a week, that it would terminate at, uh, August thirty-first of two thousand twenty?
Yeah, who had that in mind?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries.
Thank you. Do we, as part of that, I mean, I, we actually technically have to approve the person who's hiring? I mean, is that, can that all be wrapped into the one motion?
Yes, yeah.
Alright, next item is a tobacco license. The city has received an application from Yard Works LLC to sell tobacco products at their new store opening later this year at one oh two North Main Street. The store will be a gift shop-like store that sells tobacco products. Council actually requested us to approve tobacco licenses requested, we have discussion or questions on this?
Okay, I'm not familiar with this at all. I mean, I read that, but I'm not...
You'd be in this corner or...
Yeah, one oh two is the old star building.
The old circle.
Okay, so it is not, it's somebody new coming in, it's not something that's already existing?
Right, somebody's new coming in, yes.
What's a game plan if they can't sell tobacco? I mean, is it already a, have you guys seen a business plan for this already?
No, we haven't. Um, you know, I think the tobacco and the CBD oils and, um, creams and stuff are a big part, part of it.
I just see the word gift shop in quotes, uh, I wonder why?
I'm not really sure what they're calling it, but it's, it's, he has other ones. Are you familiar with what they?
Not two of them, but, uh, one in Iowa and I think one in southwestern Minnesota.
Um, they're gonna do coffees, that kind of stuff.
Questions?
Gift shop, not like what's north of town.
Any other questions?
So, it's more than a tobacco?
Yes, yes.
Strile, have you heard anything about this place by chance?
I haven't.
You know where my mind's running right now, I'm guessing, I mean, uh... I, I guess technically I don't have a problem with selling tobacco, so I guess...
And they'll have to stay all under the rules of, let's say companies give them some, our ordinances.
They'll apply each year.
Mm-hmm, and apply each year, they'll be back for...
It's not forever.
So, if they're selling other stuff, we can...
Motion approved tonight?
I'll make motion approve.
Second?
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. That takes us out of motions in general business, takes us into mayor staff and consultant reports. Major's report tonight. The city would like to send their sympathies out to the families of Richard Flynn, Sandra Jansen, Carol Meyer, Maxine Rumpel, Doris Hagan, and Clifton Pagel. Let's support our neighbors, coming right up, good time in High Forest, the Old Sudders Day, that's on Saturday, September seventh. So, it makes a good time off there. The young and the old Sudders. Peanut Days, if you see the paper, is coming right up. Come on us, we'll be selling peanuts on September sixth and seventh. Donations help reach an angel fund through the school district. Very good causes, very good group of people. That's all I've got for tonight. Takes us out of city minister's report.
Uh, the only thing extra beyond what your report, uh, that's in your packet is if you've had a chance to review those law enforcement contracts, just let us know, um, basically the personnel committee, if you've got any revisions or things you wanna ask or change. That should do it.
Let me ask you, have you come up with anything for the personnel committee? Approximately time, we're supposed to meet the public works union or anything?
Yeah, actually that was next, uh, down the thing. Cause we'd obviously have a couple items now, so one option is to look at next Tuesday, hopefully. Um, because then it would be like the final, um, negotiation with the finance director candidate. Um, first run with the police union, or, uh, public works union. And then, um, mayor had asked about the personnel org chart and then the law enforcement contract, so...
What time are you looking at on Tuesday? So, I, I actually think I'm, that's what I was just gonna say, I know I'm bad for the rest of this week. Monday and Tuesday, I should be pretty good, pretty open, I just gotta double check, but I, I mean, I, I don't work those two days, so I should be able to make anything work.
Do you pick the time?
Yep, yep.
Way to take that back. I wanna go early, cause, uh, that first, that's the third, right?
Wow.
Yeah.
Be Tues, Tuesday is probably...
Right, so after school, I'm gonna watch my kids' football games, so I'd rather...
What time does that start?
Do it in the morning, four o'clock. So, we do it in the morning sometime or early afternoon.
Can you come out and help do chores quick, we can do it earlier than...
You want me to do chores?
You got a ten o'clock recon, so maybe do a one o'clock meeting?
One minute, quick, three.
Four o'clock, yeah, I can't get that working.
Move your body before four.
One o'clock committee or anything?
Uh, no, just wouldn't...
You gotta check with the union, make it work with them, or?
I told them it could be, because all of you have different work schedules, um, that it could be at night even too.
I was gonna offer a ten percent rate straight up, but because there's some difficulty scheduling, I figured we're just gonna have to discuss.
So, I'll give them that time.
Give them the bad news too? Seven o'clock Tuesday?
So, Tuesday.
We'll shoot for one o'clock.
Can one of you two just send me a reminding email on that please?
Alright. Any other questions for the minister? Alright, finance directors report. Back to you, Bill.
Uh, yep, we're making up the booklets, so we're gonna send those out. These would just be the draft, uh, proposed, uh, budget that's coming in from the barbin heads and the ones that carry over. So, with your packets, these are a three-ring binder for a couple, or Josh, I guess, the new one. So, those will have to get delivered to you. And then, um, you'll have that to go with your packet. So, the plan is to have it ready to go or delivered, uh, by Friday noon when you get back.
We're gonna try doing the first, put together before the meeting on?
Yeah, and then...
First Tuesday of September?
Five fifteen on September tenth.
So, then we'd like you to be looking those over, over the weekend, so we can at least do an initial meeting on that Tuesday, the tenth. Um, and then if needed, um, we could do a follow-up meeting the following Tuesday. But if you seem fairly okay with what everything is being proposed, cause remember, this is just a preliminary, you'd still have up and through December to, um, revise that. But, um, it just helps us out with any ideas that you have.
Gotta be into the calendar before the end of the month, right?
Yep, the thirtieth, yep. So, then we'd bring it back for your, at least preliminary adoption on the second meeting in September, which is what, twenty-fourth, I believe?
Okay.
And then I did talk to, I think, the finance folks and they said that was fine, just to give it to all of you, since all of you have to kind of decide on it, so...
Alright, thanks Bill. Public Works Director, Sean? Public Works Director, Sean?
Uh, I don't know, I'm reporting, it's in there. The two things I want to touch on is the big projects on amphitheater, hopefully the end of this week. Laura's got the bid on the dirt work, and Dewey Hebel will be back from vacation, we can start stripping, so that we can utilize some of our dirt, our commonex off of our street project to help shape and get the fills, so we get held out there for free, and, uh, get the fill supplied. And then also the ditch that we're looking at filling in, uh, in the Ferguson Alexander subdivision. I believe all homeowners are in agreement, not all of them have signed the, the contract on it yet, but we will be, they went today and pulled some of the trees out, so they can see what they're doing, and they want to get going on that as soon as possible also. So that sounds like that will be done in the near future also.
Any questions for Sean? Alright, thanks, Sean, to the other guys, thanks. City Engineer, Jenna?
Um, our report was last meeting, so, um, no report for your packet in this meeting.
Everything's cool with the project?
Project keeps rolling around, rolling on, so, concrete, um, driveways are done on one side. Sidewalk will go in next, and then they'll do driveways on this side with the sidewalk. They're almost to fifth on, or they should have probably rounded the corner today, on sewer and water, and they'll be hopefully finishing up on fifth sometime next week, maybe by the end of the week.
Two late poles are holding us up a little bit, but that's the power company. And then, we gotta wait for them for the sidewalk to finish.
So, and then, they have another crew that's gonna fall back and start pulling the storm sewer up third and fifth, so.
Good. Any questions for Jenna? Thank you, Jenna. Library Director's report, Nate?
Above and beyond my report, um, information that just came in since I submitted this, Olmstead County has given us their budget level for library funding for 2020. They are proposing, uh, a library allocation for Stewartville of $55,122, which would be a 4.74% increase over 2019, which seems like really good news to me. And we have, um, our new copy machine has been installed and set up. We can now offer, uh, full-color scanning and full-color copying to the public for the first time, which is, I think, a real boon to our service. And I'm working on faxing, but that's a little more complicated, but I'm hoping to get that by maybe October.
Is that done with a library card, or is that a, a fee above and beyond a library card?
Uh, for sending a fax?
Well, your copy machine?
Uh, yeah, so the copy machine, uh, the council approved paying for that at the, uh, I think, two meetings ago. We actually bought, our existing copy machine had been pretty much on the tail end of its life cycle, and, um, we upgraded to, instead of, um, instead of renting a copy machine, we bought a second-hand, year-old machine from, um, a business in Rochester that had gone under, and, um, it is, and our service contract is so much significantly lower as a result of this, that it'll pay, the machine will pay for itself in about a year and a half. So, um, we are absolutely charging the public, uh, you know, 50 cents a copy for, for color copying. The scanning email is free, because it doesn't cost us anything. There is an email address that's attached to the copy machine that our Selco Tech Services set up for us. So if somebody wants to scan photos or documents, um, and a lot of businesses are moving away from faxing and to scanning emails, so this way you can just have a PDF sent from, you know, right from, um, the copy machine to your insurance people or whomever. So it's really, it's, it's a quantum leap service from what we were able to offer before, and, um, at really no additional cost to us.
Question for Nate?
Well, apparently they did quite a bit of reading.
Yeah, for sure, yeah. Uh, and then again, you know, for a first year, um, I was not in a, because of when I came on board, I wasn't able to go to the schools and promote summer reading, so I think this is really a tip of the iceberg for what, um, we can have happen for next year, so. Excited about where we're going forward.
Alright.
Good.
Thank you, Nate. No fire chief tonight, but there's a report, the July report is in the packet, for your perusal. And it takes us to committee commission board reports. Right on top of that is the Chamber E newsletter for August and September. It's got some investigative visits coming up, some have gone past. If you can get to some of them, I greatly appreciate that. Don't forget, we have, uh, anyone that can make it, we have groundbreaking in GeoTech tomorrow at about 9:00?
9:00, up at their building, up on the hill there, Ken.
So if you, if you can make it here at the table, we'd want, more than welcome, we'd love to have you out there. EDA HR8? No, we just had kind of last meeting, kind of, right next to me, didn't we?
Yep.
Finance?
Just to leave the budget coming up?
Library?
I wasn't able to make it, but-
I sure was there.
Nate covered everything, pretty good, so, was on you, Jenna.
Park Board?
Meeting was the last minute, or minutes of the last meeting are in there.
Anything about exciting hotels going on?
Nope, we're not increasing the budget request this year.
But I see that they've already started work on that, that VFW park, is that the one that's on the south? South of town, you come into town, right?
Yeah.
Let's see, but I see that they did that for the park on the city, I saw it's all cleared out there.
Well, a lot of that was off of our street project, so they accessed to the free fill, and it gets all, gets a lot of them out for nothing. So they were taking the management of that.
Really? Cool.
Alright, Personnel?
Uh, just in the meeting next Tuesday at 1:00, we'll try for her.
Public Safety, Mike, you have anything to add?
Uh, the report in your packet is to be from August 1st through 2026, 346 public service. We've already looked at being traffic stops, insists, and medicals. We did have two significant events as far as crawling goes last week with, uh, some cambering with some motor vehicles, and then two motor vehicle thefts. And a few where there were some, uh, personal logings removed from vehicles, and in all those instances, the outstanding factor was that vehicles are unlocked, so just remind yourself and family members that, uh, locked vehicles, highly available. Valuables bring inside, you know, pull your own doors, because it's really a, a hard of opportunity. Let's see, um, you know, next week we have school starting, so with, with that being said, school buses are gonna be on the routes, so reminder to keep an eye out for children crossing and stop arms. Thanks to Sean's crew, they put out some stop arm signs. On the funniest streets, hopefully that's a little bit more visibility with the E on sign there. And then, last thing, I just want to hand her for your assistance in bailing the vajus for blood dilations. Don't want to, on behalf of law enforcement, we're down by 10 for the ambulance service, so. That's Friday. Get in there, get your blood.
Okay, any questions you'd like? Alright, thank you, Public Works?
Uh, just one item, um, Craig had kind of started talking about. We have one resident from a previous CIP project that wants to meet, um, with the staff, our city engineer, and then one or two council reps, Public Works is kind of the area that we'd take a look at, and it's with some driveway repairs. They have questions on that, so. We'd like to get that coordinated within the next, I guess, week or so, while the weather's still good, so you can see, see what they've got, and then it'd be a chance for us to comment likewise, so. We'll be in touch where they are, or?
So the two that are on Public Works?
Well, that would be the most appropriate, but I know Craig had gotten a request, so I guess you guys can mix and match, but-
It was my neighbor griping about it, so I'd rather not, so I get involved, I can't.
With Public, Public Works?
Yeah, that's appropriate, yep, yep.
Alright, we'll get hooked up with them afterwards.
Yeah, we'll send a notice, and Cheryl can get that posted, so, and it'd be out on the site, um, so.
Alright, ready?
Uh, Jenna, or Joya just had a meeting today, so she'll be working on those minutes, and any updates, um, coming up?
Roll call?
No meeting or no report?
2180. Transit Advisory Committee?
Uh, we did have a meeting last week, so we're waiting for some more information. One of the items could be, um, a possible request for a contribution for the next bus, five years out, uh, like we used to do, we used to set aside money, uh, for five years, and then that would be our contribution. But what Dan is gonna come back to report with too is the ridership, um, isn't at the numbers that they feel they can maybe even go forward with. So that's something we'll have to take a look at before we want to commit to any additional funding for our portion of the bus, so.
Alright. No communications tonight, open mic. City Council welcomes and encourages participation from community members. Please keep in mind that comments must support the city business, must adhere to the data privacy rules, no employee's name may be used. Please do not expect action from the council this evening regarding your concerns. We also request that your comments be limited to four minutes, speakers will be recognized only once. At this time, I will ask that anyone who would like to address the city council, please step up to the podium, state your name and address. Does anyone want to? Motion to adjourn? We have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Or adjourn?